Good morning. This is the Tuesday, July 5th, meeting of the Lancaster Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, I'm serving as Chair this year. To my left, Kristy Yocum is our Vice Chair, Commissioner Rick Best on the far end, and to my right, Roma Amundson and Commissioner Sean Flowerday. So if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. Material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. And agenda on one or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 28th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. You have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of June 28th. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting with the city and village representatives on June 30th, 2022.
Move approval. Second. Motion, a second, to approve. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are consent items, the routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. The items are approval of amendments of following county contracts. C-18-252 with Wellpath LLC for medical service, for medical care services for the Youth Services Center. C-21-813 with Eleanor Creative LLC for implementing marketing and hiring campaigns for Corrections, Youth Services Center, and Mental Health Crisis Center. C-19-578 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company for the annual supply of John Deere Amendment to road maintenance agreement for High Plains Enterprises, Inc. to assign its rights and obligations under County Contract C-21-752 to Bauer Infrastructure LLC. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Travis J. and Abby S. Holmes, South 134th Street and Pine Lake Road, in amount of $3,445.
Move approval of the consent items?
Constance L. and Michael Bridges, South 134th Street and Pine Lake Road, in amount of $30.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
Motion to approve the consent items? Call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, new business.
Excuse me, did I miss?
The claims.
Two. Dan, I, Dan, I. Item two.
What was it about? Did I miss it? I'm sorry.
Well.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I missed number two. This is claims, approval of claims process through July 5th, 2022. This needs to be amended to include payroll ending June 29th, 2022.
I would, I would move approval of claims, including payroll through June 29th, 2022.
Second. All right, motion, second. I guess our brains are still on holiday. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number four, A, new business. This is amending the resolution for claims review policy. We had discussed this at a prior staff meeting about providing for the 90-day claims to come to the administrative office for review before they go to a staff meeting if we find that we would recommend approval. Then I'll just put those administratively on for separate review and approval on a Tuesday meeting so we can cut out one process, one piece of that process.
In our ever, ongoing drive for excellence and efficiency, this is another step in that direction. I would move approval.
Motion, a second, to approve. Call the roll, please.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Four B is a resolution, a matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County which have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval. Second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a resolution authorizing traffic control devices to be installed along South Folsom Street between the intersections of South Folsom Street and West Pioneer Boulevard and South Folsom Street and West Old Chaney Road.
Move approval.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution accepting maintenance responsibilities for certain roads and streets located within Fox Run and Fox Run First through Fourth additions.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This resolution will approve Lancaster County taking over the maintenance for these subdivision roads. This will bring our count of subdivision lots that we maintain up over 3,000 lots. Subdivision maintenance is much more intense than regular road and maintenance, and I would just like to, in a friendly way, remind the board that we have no funding source for this, and yet it continues to place an additional burden on our department.
Is there a motion?
How do we push back on this?
That's, that's what's in my head.
Fundamentally, I understand if they meet certain requirements, then we're supposed to, but it's just, like, because I, I agree with the engineer.
But because it meets, does meet certain criteria, I move approval. Second. The motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four F is a program, or excuse me, four E is a resolution, a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign the program agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation for setting out the various duties, funding responsibilities for federal aid project on South 68th Street from First Road to Sage Coach Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this item and the item preceding it are in regards to South 68th Street and safety improvements and modernization associated both with highway safety improvement program funds, which are a competitive program, and with MPO funds. And so, this is a large project, will most likely be the largest project to date in Lancaster County. We, this, this agreement gets us so that we can start work on this project. And so, my department, in particular Larry Legg and Allison Cook, have been working on this safety study for almost three years now, and so we are super excited to bring this project forward. I would just like to note that this project is anticipated at current cost to be just a little under $11 million, of which approximately $1.6 million will be Lancaster County property taxpayers' responsibility. And so, this is a big deal for us. We could have never afforded this project on our own.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a program agreement with NDOT for HSIP and MPO STBG funds for the intersection safety improvement and shoulder widening on South 68th Street from First Road to Sage Coach Road. The total cost of the project is currently estimated to be $10,788,672.28. The Lancaster County share is estimated to be $1,569,570.16.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is amusement license renewal application from Community Crops for an event on August 20th, 2022, at 31, excuse me, at 3130 North 112th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval. Second.
I don't see anyone here to speak on community crops, but it sounds like an exciting prospect.
They've done this event before, I believe.
Yes. Motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an agreement with the Mental Health Association of Nebraska to provide peer-guided personnel well-being and relapse prevention classes for male and female inmates in the custody of the Lancaster County Department of Corrections. The cost of county is not to exceed $11,583.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brenda Fisher, Programs Director with Lancaster County Department of Corrections. This agenda item is regarding an agreement that we have negotiated with the Mental Health Association to provide Wellness Recovery Action Plan programming, otherwise known as RAP, W-R-A-P, for inmates who are engaged in the intensive substance abuse therapeutic education program, right now underway for the women and soon to be underway for the men. So we'll be able to engage them in relatively short order for the female program that exists and is underway now, and then we'll be able to get them going from the, from the start with the males. The concept behind the RAP program is that it is peer-led, trained facilitators who have lived experience facilitate this program. The objective of the program is to have the participants be able to formulate a recovery action plan for prevention of relapse in the areas of both substance use and mental health concerns. It has proven successful over time because there is a certain investment, perhaps, that takes place on the part of the participants when they are the primary designers of that plan of recovery, as opposed to having someone else with professional credentials tell them what to do. So, we're excited to get it started, we're excited to see what sort of a difference this will make, and we're excited to partner with the Mental Health Association to be able to bring that to the inmates.
Is this the same program? Some of us have attended graduations in the jail. Is this that program now expanding, or is this?
It will be part of that program. We had, at the beginning of the women's program that we're doing now, we had had someone from Community Corrections able to facilitate RAP, but their availability is no longer there. So this allows us to bring that component back in and continue to provide the, the true RAP program to both, as I said, both the females who are doing that program now and whose graduation you may have attended, and then the men who are, who we are set to get underway ideally in September.
Will this relationship or mentorship continue once they're released?
They will have access to contact the Mental Health Association, certainly, for community-based support, and, you know, there is a peer support component to what MHA does already. They have been in the jail as peer visitors for, for probably more inmates than I could count, so.
Really like hearing that the participants are taking responsibility, they're, in fact, designing their own road out because addictions are horribly difficult challenge, and for them to be engaged in that way seems like the best opportunity. I'm just genuinely appreciative that you all are continuing this and expanding it, and I would move approval.
Second. All right, motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Four I is an agreement, Blue to Gold LLC, to provide an advanced search and seizure training for Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. The cost of county is $7,500.
Good morning.
Good morning. John Vick, Captain, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. This is an agreement to bring in a national training organization to train our deputies in advanced search and seizure for a one-day class in November. So it's going to be a, an update for most of our folks, but one that we're looking forward to be able, able to bring locally.
Is it fair to ask what advanced search and seizure is? I mean, we're laypeople, obviously, captains, so.
Sure. So, obviously, we train our, our folks in basic search and seizure laws. They receive that when they go to Grand Island, everything about the Fourth Amendment. This is going to be a little bit more nuanced into some of the more complex searches that we get into, kind of layering consent and other exceptions to the Fourth Amendment, so that people are able to avoid lawsuits and, and have more legally admissible evidence.
Great, thank you. I, I would move, move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a contract with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc. to provide lab services and testing with related products and supplies. The cost of county is not to exceed $75,000.
Move approval. Second. Motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an agreement with Zell LLC to provide training and panel discussion facilitation for the county's Leadership Academy. The cost of county is not to exceed $16,350.
Good morning. I just wanted to let the board know that this contract with Zell is for our fourth academy, our fourth Leadership Academy. There is one minor change in this contract, and I've had the opportunity to talk to a few of the Commissioners about this, but this year we're going to try something new with Leadership Academy, and we are going to have Zell facilitate panel discussions with all of our agency heads. So we will take what the participants have learned in their training session with Zell, and we will apply that to our agency heads with just different questions and scenarios so our participants can see how our agency heads interact with those leadership topics. So we're excited about that change, and with that, I would answer any other questions that you may have.
Well, I think we're all excited by the work of the Leadership Committee that we've seen so far, just a tremendous example of our employees stepping forward, and this will continue that process, so, great.
I think that one of the other changes, you're shortening up the day?
Yes, that's correct. So generally, we have gone from 8:30 to 3:00, and sometimes that's hard for people to step away from their desk for that entire day. So we're going to look at going from 8:30 to 1:00 this year, so that if there's employees that need to go, you know, back to work or get training done or anything like that, that they can do that in the afternoon. So we'll, we'll try that for a year and see how that goes for our employees and for the academy.
Applications are available now?
Yes, we sent out an enterprise email last week. Sage has created a page on the county board's website with a description of the academy and a link to the application. I believe applications are due July 22nd.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion, a second. Call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four L is an interlocal agreement with the Nebraska Administrative Office of the Courts of Probation for a probation coordinator and a probation officer to provide services with the following: DUI court and the Veterans Treatment Court.
All right, Jeff. Any information you'd like to share on this item?
Yeah, good morning, Jeff Curry with Lancaster County Adult Probation. These contracts are kind of, I know, I guess, I won't say formality, but we had a vets court one before for two years. Basically, just, the, the salaries are paid by the state for the coordinator and the officer. Our DUI program's expanding. We did add a DUI court officer, and we're not asking for any additional space or anything. But having a lot of success there. Currently have 22 people in that program. We're going to expand up to 28. In Phase Five, participants don't count, so I think it's safe to say we will have over 30 soon. We have five or six people on, that we're screening right now to add to the court. And then our veterans court has 10 people. We're looking at expanding the criteria soon, I hope, so we can get more people in. And that's being reviewed right now. And we do have a graduation coming up, and you should be getting, if you have not, you should be getting an invite pretty soon. It's next Tuesday at 6 o'clock in this room.
Great. Thank you. Move approval.
Second.
Until your program's growing, when you look at the traffic along the side of the road, you've got people coming in and testing all the time, so.
H Street gets really busy with us.
It does.
Community protections.
All right, call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an interlocal agreement with Educational Service Unit Number 18 of the State of Nebraska for educational instruction services and support. At the Youth Services Center, the cost of county is not to exceed $9,970.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve. Call the roll, please.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a contract with Midwest Mechanical Contractors of Nebraska for chiller replacement at Youth Services Center. The cost of county is not to exceed $648,037.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Facilities and Property. Last week, I believe you approved the bid amount for this ARPA project for the heat recovery chiller at the Youth Services Center. This week, I'm back saying, please approve the contract.
Oh, okay.
Move approval.
Second.
We're always excited to approve chiller replacements in July.
All right, call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four O is a contract with Midwest Mechanical Contractors of Nebraska for HVAC replacement for DMV locations. The cost of county is not to exceed $51,535.
Okay, this is the second ARPA project that Property Management has, has scheduled to complete, and we have those bids out. There is one of three rooftop units out of 46 and R Street. It's the last one to get replaced. We've been doing this sequentially every year, and the other one is for West O Street, and it's one of the larger ones, and there's also a component inside in the attic. If either one of these failed, they would be very warm buildings. So, this has been on the schedule for ARPA, and that dollar amount is, is what they've got scheduled.
Move approval.
So I am asking for approval of this contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
P is a contract with Mahoney Fire Sprinkler, Inc. for annual inspection, testing, and maintenance of the fire sprinkler systems. The cost of county is not to exceed $2,500.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve the contract with Mahoney's Fire Sprinkler. Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is a work and financial plan pursuant to cooperative service agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for the Department's Wildlife Management Program. The program is from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. The cost of county is not to exceed $10,706.76.
Move approval. Second. Motion is second. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Association of County Officials for purposes of allowing Lancaster County to use NACO's bulk mail permit to mail postcards required by Nebraska Revised Statute 77-1633.
Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Registered Deeds. This is, uh, an issue we've worked with NACO on to coordinate all of the, um, printing and mailing of the postcards for the, uh, Notice of Potential Tax Increase, LB 644, uh, postcard project, uh, later this fall. Um, what this will do is enable all of the counties to use the same permit through the state print shop. Um, NACO will then turn around and bill us for the postage. That keeps us from playing the game where we have to get the exact postage, wait to have you guys approve that amount, then get a check to the post office quickly. This will, uh, make everything with that tight timeframe we have, uh, work much smoother. So, NACO's been generous enough to, uh, offer that service to us.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S are reappointments to the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health for the term from April 15th, 2022 to April 15th, 2025. This is for Tom Randa, Dr. Stacy Blyker, and Dr. Katie Garcia.
I would move approval of these reappointments. These are excellent public servants who have done great work on the Board of Health, and we're lucky to have them signed up for another term.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. T is a notice of terminating county contract C-21-849 with Richard, with Richard Weiner for the reason that the University Board of Regents is a proper grantee for the subaward contract.
Good morning. So, um, uh, when, uh, funds were allocated to the Human Service for, um, distributing out to the nonprofits, the 15 million, it was, uh, determined by Human Service to enter into an agreement with Dr. Weiner for, um, uh, to get outcomes data so that we could do reporting. Well, the contract was directly to Dr. Weiner instead of UNL, and it needed to be switched. So, uh, they have the contract right now and are reviewing. So, as soon as they sign and get it back, then we will bring that to you.
Okay. So, do we need action today, or would you want us to hold?
Yeah, this, we need to terminate this one. We'll bring back.
Yeah, okay.
The contract to take this place.
Okay.
I move, we approve the, approve the termination of this contract.
Okay. Thanks.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. U is a recommendation from the printing agent and county engineer to ward a contract to Rose Equipment, Inc. for poly-patch applicator rental and mastic paved patch in the amount of $120,800.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, we use this type of machine for when we have cracks that are larger, that where the opening is larger than one inch. Um, we do have a video about this, um, on our Lancaster County Engineering Department website. What we typically do is we buy the mastic material, uh, to fill, uh, to fill these openings, and we're able to, uh, borrow a machine, uh, from the city of Lincoln through an, an interlocal agreement. We're always a little concerned that, hey, they have a lot of pavement maintenance too, so if their machine is not available, we need to have an agreement so that we're ready to go when we need to go.
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, non-agenda, may do so this time.
Mr. Attorney One wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, would you continue with the announcements?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July 7th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. in Room, in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the root broadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV, YouTube, Roku, and Apple TV.
Move, we adjourn?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. We will now call to order the Tuesday, July 5th, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Opening Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda item one are amendments. Approval of amendments to the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Hello again. Just wanna make one minor correction in the addition and deductions. The David Workman, uh, the note should say this is due to clerical error that you guys approved the value correction to the clerical error in our last meeting, so that was inadvertently, uh, noted as the same as the rest of them. So, that one is, this one is unique in that that is based on a clerical error approved previously.
Okay.
And that note will be reflected in the voucher that goes to the treasurer.
Someone wanna word that motion?
Not without asking question. Wait, so, Scott, before you get away, we are, go ahead.
I will move approval of the additions and deductions to the set tax assessment roll, including the notation of the clerical error regarding, the previously referenced clerical error regarding David Workman.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, so I'll second it.
Perfect. Perfect. Call the roll, please.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a public hearing. This is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This includes Christ Place, East Ridge Presbyterian Church, Capital Man Society, Radiant Church, Hope Spoke, Fellow Marie School, Christian Retirement Home, Doing Business as E-Mountain, as Eastmont Towers, Crystal Ray Catholic Church, North American Martyrs Church and School, Nebraska Safety Council, University of Nebraska Foundation, and Cedars Youth Services.
All right. We will open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. So, do you wish to provide testimony? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to item four.
Number four is, uh, motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second. All right. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest? Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, non-agenda, may do so this time.
Is there no wish, wishing to make public comment? Seeing no one, uh, motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.